Slick and very
Vidyard? Vidyard?
It is not that one, but if that one works too, then this is Cloud HQ, a video email by Cloud HQ. You just pull it up and it's you hit the video and you can do now. It's not a fancy. It's not fancy. It's free, but rather than paying for BombBomb, if you know what that is, which is where that I was going to take this when Barry Banther did his thing on NSA National. He kind of went through and I, I know a lot of folks in this world are great speakers, but might not be the best business people. And he went through, you know, literally what, you know, fixed expense discretionary expense, variable expenses, and really looking at the business as a whole. And I mean, I'll be personal. I shared some of mine. I actually did the little exercise and you know discretionary. I have Terminix, I have TrueGreen, I have a daughter in cheer landscaping, Netflix, college savings, clean cleaning company. You know, kids life insurance, our life insurance, you know, with the different levels of what really is most important and what can you take out right now to simply take your overhead to a sheer minimum. So your burn rate goes down if there's zero coming in and obviously more going out. I would think most people would understand that. And the other aspect I thought was really good is contracts open the negotiation. So I have, we have a pond out back and I have a, I've been blessed where I can hire someone else to maintain the pond for me. And I called out to them and said, Hey, you know, events industry, I'm kind of tight right now. What options do we have? And one of the neatest things he says, you know what, we're all small business. Why don't we just keep, we'll just keep taking care of it for you and whenever you can catch up or pay to start paying is what they told me. So I thought that was good. I called Spectrum, which is my wireless. I'm like, Hey, what, what options do we have of doing some minimize my spectrum? My full internet was key, but I haven't called Verizon, LA Fitness, Cycle Bar, those closed anyway. But looking for things you can call and potentially negotiate for a three month period of time. And truly things like Terminix and TrueGreen, I just, you know, I said, put everything on hold and put them on pause. And you've seen some of the stuff on maybe the national news where mortgage payments and missing mortgage payments. Hopefully, you know, some people are going to be in that situation. I'm, you know, I won't personal situation, but those are things I think everyone could look at, should look at. If you've never done it, you don't make any changes. That's great. But if you really don't have, if you don't know what your burn is a month of going out the business as opposed to what's coming in, then you should do that. How about that? Is that quick to the point?
Perfect. That was perfect. And to, and to that point, I do, I did see where in the Senate bill that's now in the House and they're debating that the relief bill, there is a provision in there that those who are self-employed and in the gig economy can apply for unemployment insurance. So hopefully that'll be finalized today and we can figure, figure that out moving forward. And I, I know the state of Ohio is just waiting for the governor to sign. When the feds moved the tax date to July 15th, Ohio didn't do it. So it had legislature had to go and put, they put it in this bill. And it's when it's passed and signed by the governor, the tax, Ohio tax date will, will mirror the federal date as well. That was a big thing that I even slipped by me and wait a minute, I, that doesn't make sense. So they were able to get that executed. Yes, Kay.
You know, of course I'll have to give my accountant, but you know, they assume, you know, the gig economy, that everybody is like a solopreneur or a sole proprietor. I'm an LLC with one employee, me. I actually have payroll where I pay myself. I don't understand it all. My accountant does, but apparently it was the best way to, to set up. Does anybody have any idea? That, that sounds like so many cracks. I don't know if am I small business? Would I, would me as an employee, would I, I don't know. I mean,
I do.
You know?
Maybe, and Jack jump in on that as well, but I've, if, uh, Jack unmute, we can both address. If, if you've paid into unemployment, you can, you can let yourself go and you can file unemployment. If, because if you are, but you need to W two yourself depending on your corporate LLC structure. If it's a straight 1099 yourself, then probably not. You'd have to fall under this new bill. But if you W to yourself, then Jack?
Yeah, basically, and I don't do that. I mean, I was, I even as a CPA, I've not set up the LLC. Basically, I guess I'm a little bit lazy. I didn't want to go through all that. There's a lot of paperwork you gotta go through and everything like that, but it's not a bad thing to do in terms of peace of mind. What that basically does, that puts a firewall between you and anybody that wants to sue you for whatever it is, you know, to do that. And they can still do that, but it's much more cost costly on their part. And, uh, but yeah, you can do that with one employee and I know, uh, I don't know a lot of speakers that do that. I know a couple of attorneys that of course it's in their profession, but they're basically sole proprietors, but they've done that too.
Jim?
Okay. When you let yourself go, make sure you have security on hand to walk you to the door because you never know what could happen.
Yeah. Make sure you put everything in a box, cardboard box, and you have 10 minutes clean at your desk. Yes, Kay.
It's like in the movies, you know, when someone's let go or fired or quit, they always have that one file box full of stuff. And there's usually that raggedy plant that hangs out of it. So I'll do the, I'll do the perp walk out of my office when, when that happens. So yeah.
Well, I'm about to put my two new full-time employees, my son and my wife on warning. My son sleeps way too late if he's going to be on pay, try to be on payroll and my wife, I delegate stuff to her. She just says, no, she's got a part-time job. She's still trying to keep together. I just can't keep this business together. These people, it's tough. Anybody else want to share? Okay.
Yeah, I, um, we've all heard all the advice, the good advice, the bad advice, the, um, I don't know about everybody else, but I did go through a period of several days when I just felt shell shock. I just was almost frozen. I didn't, I didn't know what to do. I was, and I read an article on grief, which I've already studied a lot about grief, but apparently when you have a huge loss, not just loss of a loved one, but something like this, it's loss of security or loss of the known, you know, you, you look ahead. You know what your future is for the next several months. And when you go through that, you actually go through a process of grief, which I thought was interesting. And it's not a straight line progression. So you could say, all right, I'm good now. I've accepted it. We're moving on. And the next day you're like, you know, depressed, something can set you off or you let some toxic person get in your head. So I, I won't say I wasted time. I believe you have to go through these steps and be honest with how you're feeling. But I turned a corner the last couple of days and I feel like I have direction and I'm also being forced to learn something really new. Now I'm a live performer. I, I have not been set up and maybe I'm a little behind the eight ball because I'm not a trainer. I'm not, I don't, I barely know Zoom. I can make my way onto a call, but I, I'm a live performer and, um, and that's kind of it. I don't have online courses. I don't have, and I have put all my eggs in that basket for 35 years. So it's just boom. Now what do I do? Well, I was supposed to do a conference in May, American Payroll Association, which is a huge conference, 2,500 people. Mark Sharon Brock is the other keynote. And I just got word from them that they are proceeding with a four-day virtual conference. And I'm going to have to learn this. And if I'm being honest, I don't think over video I can deliver 100% of what I could do. But I think, I think I can make it really good. So it gives me something to embrace the challenge. I want to be good. I want to give them value. And you know, there's different things you could do. You could do slides, you can do little video clips. So, um, so I've had a sort of a forced having to move it in a different direction. And I think, um, one of the things I've, myself and things I've picked up from other NSA people, the great session last night with Mike Staver and Meredith Elliott Powell, and it was about, um, the spirit of giving, you know? And they said, be very careful. When you go to say, I'm going to give away this free webinar, watch your motives. Be sure they really are pure. And you're like, I want to, in the spirit of not like, what can I get from it? Not that that isn't lingering in the back of our minds, but when you really give with a true spirit of giving, it's just, it's just the right thing to do right now. How can I help? How can I serve? Can I sew a mask? Can I go to my clients and say, I'll do a little free webinar for your people? I know they gotta be hurting right now. And so anything we can do, um, it opens up the creative juice. It's just, it's just good karma too, just to get in that spirit of how can I serve? You know, we can learn from these healthcare workers. Everybody else runs out, they run in, you know? So that, that's, that's what I have to add right now.
Jim, Jim first and then Roxanne.
Yeah. I, I hear you about, about the twists and turns we can do, Kay, just the way we deliver stuff, right? The way we provide our content. A little bit of a warning though, um, I, I hear a lot of speakers and some have contacted me. How do I make a course? How do I make an online course? Some of you have been in Protrack or seen Protrack where we do the lean canvas, where we determine if we're going to build a business out of something and how we're going to make that business. So here's the advice I have given because it was requested of a few speakers. Did you do a business plan? Figure out how this course that you would develop is going to help a marketplace? And were you so busy speaking that you didn't make it? If that's the case, and now you have time, go ahead and make it. If you didn't do all of that stuff before, don't make a course now. There's a reason why you haven't made a course yet. It's okay. You shouldn't make a course. There's nothing wrong with that. And that's again, people telling you what to do. We're hearing, we should do that. Is there a business proposition that makes sense for doing that way of delivering content? Kay, you doing a virtual keynote with 2,500 people online? That makes perfectly good sense. That's an extension of what you're doing, right? And it's a little different, but it's an extension. Um, if you're an after dinner keynote humorist, to do an online course, unless it was about how to be that, does it make a lot of sense? Why drive yourself crazy trying to do something? That's like me learning how to dig a ditch. It doesn't make sense. So, so just a word of warning there. Think business to John's point, you know? Does it make sense for my business to do this? Because if we went like that and everybody was the same old way tomorrow, would you still be doing that? Right? Is a valid question to ask ourselves. And, and I don't know that we're, it's ever going to be exactly the way it was before, right? But likely it will be close to that. And now what am I going to do with this silly course that doesn't make any sense? And I was jamming stuff in just to do a course. Oh, I'll throw that away. Boy, that was that wasted time could be the reaction. So something.
I agree. And I don't think anything you do that's fear panic based is going to be any good anyway. And I do have content, by the way, you know, I am a speaker. I do have, uh, expertise in stress management and I can draw upon that. But I truly have been too busy to really try to, to do a podcast or to do a webinar, to do anything like that. And, and I don't see me even still heading in that direction, but the things I was, I can write another book. That other book I've been wanting to write. Yes, this is the time. We have the time now to do that. But I agree that like, like if you want to learn piano and you'd always kind of been thinking about it and thought I should, and I should put that, and suddenly you're just trying to learn, you're not going to learn it that way. It takes a long time to like, I did Peter's podcast, you know, Peter's been doing a podcast for four and a half years. I'd love to do a podcast and he walked me through some of the ABCs and it's like any endeavor, you can't just jump in. You know, you have to learn it. You have to trial and error. You have to get good at it and you have to, you have to be laser beam focused on it. And I'm seeing where I'm interested in doing more with video. I'd already started doing that. And I also am intrigued with virtual presenting. So the fact that I'm being forced to do it and I'm actually excited about it, that opens a new avenue. Online course, it's never crossed my mind. So why would I out of fear base of thinking I should jump in and do it? Cause I don't think it would be a good result. I don't think it'd be a good use of my time.
Roxanne?
Thank you. Um, I've had an idea and I would like to get, um, your thoughts on this to see if this would make any sense to all of you, or if it's just lame. So I've been on these Zoom meetings constantly for the last couple of weeks with clients. And what they're saying, what I'm hearing from them is yes, they're all meeting virtually in their teams, their product managements and their, you know, all of their work with their clients and everything else. But a couple of them said that they, they thought, you know what, we, we, we need to interject something that's a little bit more lighthearted because we do a lot of events with our teams, with our employees and we can't do that now. So, um, one of my clients, uh, had decided to do a happy hour. And their HR and crisis communication people freaked out. You can't get 500 people on a call and you're all drinking at four o'clock in the afternoon. No, we're a corporation. You really can't do that. Well, you can, but at what risk? There's some liability involved. So I said, well, wait a minute. What if you brought in a professional speaker? Or a comedian or an improv virtuoso or, um, a famous Ohio State sports guy to, to talk and to, um, uh, entertain, to, to do 30 minutes with your corporate population? Would that be something you think would be cool? I said, are you kidding me? Yes. And I said, well, we have a network of exactly these kinds of professionals, seasoned, brilliant, you know, high level, et cetera, uh, people from in all different aspects of presentation, of keynote, of training, of speaking, of knowledge, of skills that I'd be glad to, you know, connect. I'd be glad to be the conduit. Let me know what you want, or I can offer some suggestions. So, uh, they loved that. And so then I thought, well, okay, so I should probably ask if anybody would be interested or be willing to do something like that. And if you would do or, uh, and, and if you would want to fee for that, or if this is something that maybe just during this time you would do at no fee, just for the exposure too. So please weigh in. I would love to hear your thoughts on that.
Or, or we could do it for toilet paper.
Oh, we could do it for toilet paper or Purell.
That, that's, that's, that's currency these days.
Probably is.
What do you think guys?
I like the way you're thinking.
Kay?
Okay, Kay or Roxanne, I have, um, I have proposed this idea that is NSA Ohio should sponsor these kinds of things, working with companies and utilize our members to be the performers with a cut going to the chapter and a cut going to the speaker. So I think first money, absolutely. Yes, money. We're professional speakers. Two,
Dismute yourself.
Sorry, I must've clicked it twice. Okay. So one, yes, money, we're professionals. Two, um, did you hear the part about as a chapter, we should be doing this?
Yes.
Okay. So, um, one money, two, the donation part of it could be that first experiment of us speakers doing it less than our normal fee.
Hasn't made a call all day. She said, this is about the third, I said, it's happening.
So, um, those are, that's my two cents, but if the chapter would be working with companies reaching out with this idea that our membership could be providing that particular service, charging a fee for that, and it could be something less than market level fees. Our members would then sign up for being able to do that, be picked from the list to do that, do the performance, get paid something, pay the chapter something. And we're, we're furthering the mission of NSA Ohio, being a support to the meetings industry by doing that and helping our members at the same time. So to me, it's an opportunity to finally leap into that kind of an idea for our chapter as well.
Thanks, Jim. I'd love to hear from everybody else too. Um, and I had a thought just go through my head. Oh, I'm more than happy to reach into my client companies and, and offer this and, and help to make this happen. But I'm not, I don't know that everybody feels that way. So please, you know, other thoughts on this? I, Jim, thank you. I mean, that, that's great.
Kay?
Yeah, Kay. I've had discussions with other NSA friends and colleagues and so forth on this very subject. And some people that have done, um, virtual presentations and, and how to charge, how it works. I think you all know Sarah Michelle. She's an event specialist and her, in terms of fee structure, she said a virtual should be 50 to 60% of your keynote fee reduced. There's also the school of thought right now is to be really careful to not look like we are taking advantage of a really horrible, awful situation. So marketing right now is very touchy. That's what I mean. A lot of people are telling me. Meredith Elliott Powell, I go back to her. She's a good friend too. So we've had a lot of private Zoom calls, but she was, did the call last night. And she is sending all her former clients, she sends out four or five a day, little videos, little, uh, things she can do to help. And they're all free of charge. It's really strange right now, uh, to, to do anything that's going to require us receiving money. Not that we can't, we're business people. I get it. But you know, we're all getting those emails from all those companies, Shutterfly, Delta, how much they care about us and how worried they are about us. And they're all telling us what they're going to do for us. You know, because they want to, it's good business and it's, it's a little, you know, it's a little disingenuous. You can see through it. But still, we just got to be really careful right now in terms of, do meeting planners even want to hear from us right now with, hey, I got this special package and plan, you know? The way I've seen it done is, um, another friend of mine, they asked for their deposit back for a canceled job. And she gave four, she said, number one, I will fully refund your deposit, even though actually it's non-refundable. I'll fully refund your deposit and the contract is not considered absolutely null and void, which is the way I'm doing with people. I'm not messing too much with fine print. This is tough times right now and they'll remember that later. And then number two, or I could do a three webinars for your people for, option three was a virtual presentation. You see what I mean? It's like, uh, then that was a little off the subject, but I just think it's really everybody, you know, the sort of the ear to the ground, people are saying, just be really careful about marketing right now, even if it's under the guise of we want to help your people.
Yeah. I have two schools of thoughts out, out there about that. Some are, are still selling, still marketing. And others have taken the approach of this is a time for creating goodwill, time to help folks out, to help other companies out. I've offered my services with Zoom and virtual meetings to, uh, the Ohio Society of Association execs to do it. You know, with no cost at all. And they include me in their 15, you know, emergency response people that can help these small businesses. Uh, I've been helping my wife's not-for-profit, uh, with getting them up and used to this type of stuff. And I'm, I'm looking at this time of, of giving and creating goodwill because I truly believe at the end it will pay itself back tenfold.
I'm just a bastard.
No, you're not. Absolutely not. I mean, there's, you know, who knows who's right and who's wrong. We will, we will at one point in time, but you know, there's two schools of thought out there. Anybody else? Jack? Unmute, unmute.
All things here, basically one thing, uh, I seem to be getting, uh, within the last 10 days, a much higher amount of what I think are scam emails. Does anybody else experiencing that? You know, and be very careful, open them up and so forth. Uh, but I, I'm getting a lot of them. I mean, I know they're scams. They're, and I'm probably erasing a couple that aren't, but I'm, I'm afraid to open them up. I don't want to get that stuff in the system and so forth. Uh, just a question, I know, uh, our April meeting, probably our May meeting too. I guess it'll probably be on Zoom. Is that right, Greg? Uh, probably the May meeting too, or too early to call?
I think it's too early to call, Jack.
Yeah.
I'm cautiously optimistic.
Yeah.
My question is, are we continuing Protrack that way or has Protrack kind of come to a stop?
Andrea, but, uh, my assumption was for April, for sure, it was going to be virtual. Now beyond that, I can't tell you.
Yeah. Okay.
I have spoken with, with Andrea and
Yeah, it's, yeah, they're, they're talking about, you know, she, she can do it virtual. It's just, she has to work it out with the speakers and everything or the, or the facilitators. Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, one thing I, uh, you know, I, I'm probably a lot of you do the same thing, but I've always done this. It's my background. I've always kept a strong, uh, for years, a strong look at the stock market every day. That's the first thing I look at in the morning is I pull up certain things and, uh, and I, and I have a little timer here. I don't want to spend more than 15 minutes. I mean, I could spend a lot of time on the stock market. And obviously the last, uh, eight days have been the motions going up and down. The Dow Jones average, uh, I think on the 17th of February was approaching 29,000. Three days ago, it barely closed above 19,000. Now that's a drop of more than 33%. The thing I really like, and I don't understand why this is happening, uh, it's gone up yesterday. It had a huge raise of about 2,000. Um, I've been checking it here every 15 minutes and it's up over a thousand points, almost 11,000, almost 1100 points today. In other words, it's over 22,000. Uh, I don't know if we'll ever get back to 29,000. I'm not worried about that so much. It's a trend, but I think it's really something to, to, uh, to follow. And, uh, I think the economy will come back in relationship to the, uh, the Dow Jones. I think the Dow, basically the market I think was overpriced before this thing hit. And I, I think the big drop wasn't so much only because of the fear of the virus, but it was also the fact that it was overpriced anyway. And I think some people panicked and so forth there. Uh, but I think that's a good sign. It can come down just as fast as it went up, of course, but I think that's, that's something good to look at. I'll finish up with one little anecdote here, kind of a, a situation. I think when this eventually gets turned around, it'll be a lot longer coming back than it was going down. I, this last couple of weeks, I've been doing some work that I don't normally get into until after the fourth of July. I mean, I just usually, uh, first of all, there's no spring football this year and I'm really disappointed in that. And then I feel guilty for being disappointed because that how unimportant that is compared to the other things that other people are going through in their lives. But one of my favorite things of the, of the year is going to the, uh, the coaches clinic the day before the spring game. Uh, your high state football staff puts on a coaches clinic for high school coaches. I'm probably really not supposed to go to that. It's not for the media, it's for coaches. But I've always gone and I just register and kind of sneak under the door and, and sit in the back of the room and don't ask a lot of questions, you know? I'm really going to miss that this year because I pick up so much information that way. But what I've been working on, uh, a lot last week, not quite so much, maybe more this week. I've been starting to work on some of my, what I'm going to talk about on the air this fall. And anniversaries, this is the 25th anniversary of Vinnie George's Heisman. This is the 50th anniversary of the final season of the, uh, Super Sophomores of 68. Ohio State played in its first Rose Bowl 100 years ago this season. And I've done some research on it. I mean, those will be good commentaries. They'll be good. Uh, I write a weekly column for the Columbus Dispatch. Uh, I hope they hire me to do it again next, uh, this coming fall. If there is a Columbus Dispatch by the end of fall, I'm not sure there will be, but, uh, I'm just doing some of those things and, uh, trying to keep busy that way. But I also realize how unimportant that is, uh, compared to everything else that's going on. And I think getting this economy back to where it was, uh, I don't know if I'll live long enough to see that really. I think it's going to be really slow. My, my son, Jim, who Peter was one of his college professors for that matter. And, um, he's an MBA CPA. I'm an MBA CPA and, and Peter, as I've told you many times, he's definitely the smarter one of the two of us here. I go to him for advice. But I remember it was Christmas time. I think he was probably around eight years old, 10 years old. And he got a huge Lego set for Christmas and boy, within a couple of days, he built this big house. And he was so proud of that and everything like that. And then suddenly he stumbled or something and he fell and he knocked that house down and he went ahead and built it up again. And that to me, and we've talked about that, you know, things can go down very quickly. It takes you quite a while to build it back to where it was. He knocked that house down in, in one minute. And yet it took him probably eight hours to build the thing back to where it was. So, uh, but, uh, that's all I have, guys. Uh, I think this is a good idea and I hope we do it every week, Greg and Peter and everybody.
Uh, that's the plan. Great. What you got?
Um, I just wanted, what's Oh, I'm sorry.
Good, Ray. Go ahead. Go ahead. You go.
Um, yeah, I just wanted to mention that, you know, I had done a good bit of virtual training. I've had a pretty large team in China that I've had to do a lot of training with and stuff. And so I put together some tips that I put, I published on LinkedIn, but I'll just share the link with everybody on it, you know, rather than talk about it right now. But, um, I, you know, wanted to say that structure is important to me. I like what Jack said about his little timer clock because I'm not well structured. And for myself, you know, where I'm at right now is my speaking business office. However, it's become my daytime job office now too. So I'm spending 12 hours here and I have to shift hats somehow, you know? So it's, it's, uh, structure has been extremely important to me, you know, and setting goals for, you know, hour by hour. Let's, you know, I'll give myself a break in an hour if I can get these three emails done, you know, or make two phone calls or whatever. So, yeah, I just wanted to comment on the structure, uh, part of it. Cause I thought, you know, that to me has been key.
Thanks, Greg.
Yeah. But I was going to start and say, Peter is, what if, get back to where my, get off a chat here. There we go. Um, does anybody have contacts with the media in Cleveland or in particularly Columbus? Cause I think as a group, we've got some things that'll help people in general. It may be a good way to publicize NSA Ohio. Because in really our end of the Because in really our end of the business, there's a story in itself when we start talking about what's going on within our industry. But on the other hand, we bring, I think, some, some positive vibes to this whole situation. I've been able to do it in print where I, you know, my, the regional syndication I got. But I think this is an opportunity even for some video for us. And, you know, some of you guys are right there in Columbus. But do you have contacts that we could reach out to? Because I think we've got a real message that we can put out there right now for, for folks. And get a little PR, at least for the chapter anyways, and, and help everybody.
Does anybody have any press contracts, contacts? You're muted, Jack, you're muted.
Yeah, I've got a lot of contacts in the world of sports. I'm not sure, but I could, I can talk with some of those guys, uh, to see where that would lead. I really, as many years as I've been in the media, even with the dispatch, uh, my relationships are very, very deep, but they're very narrow. They're basically with guys in the sports field. That's it. I, I couldn't even tell you who the managing editor of the Columbus Dispatch is. But I'll, I'll make an inquiry. Great, good idea, yeah.
Just offer that, I, you know, yeah, there, there may be an opportunity, but I think our message needs to be very clear. What is our message? You know, what are, what is our story? What do we want to say? And that to Kay's point, we are not appearing as if we are taking advantage of a situation. And instead, we're offering, offering points of, of help, points of contact, uh, points of experience, that sort of thing.
Okay.
I would say, and, and Jim, listen, I didn't mean, uh, actually, I, I think what you're talking about is good, and I don't think it's necessarily a bad thing to charge. I mean, we are professionals. But what about something like, you take everybody's expertise, whether it's leadership wellness, in times of crisis, in time, leadership in times of crisis, um, taking care of yourself in times of crisis. Uh, do, it could do a series of, uh, everyone could offer what it is they do, but, uh, adapt it to in times of crisis. I mean, people have got to be wanting information, you know, they still want to know how to lead. They will, they still want to know how to communicate. They still want to know, uh, sales in times of crisis. How do you handle that? You know, uh, so regardless of what your area of expertise is, it could be a package of, um, speaker tools for you to use in times of crisis. You just put it under that, because that's really what we all need to be doing right now in one form or another. We can't just go on and blindly pretend like, you know, nothing's happening or not, that has to be addressed. So, and I would think that's what people would be really looking for right now.
That's a good idea. It's a really good idea.
I, I, I think what, if, if we're packaging it like that, yes, absolutely. I think if, if it's simply, hey, you never thought about hiring a professional speaker for your virtual meeting, and here's what we do as professional speakers, that's different. So, so let's make sure we make the distinction is all.
Okay, good.
It's not, it's not, I'm a psychologist and I'm giving away all my psychology, uh, therapy for free just because everybody's in trouble. I do that within a window. I don't make it so that I can never charge for my services ever again. That's the thing we have to be careful of.
Dave? Get your hand up.
Oh, yeah. Was it? Oh, okay.
Hey, Suzanne, can you hit Dave, please?
Yeah. I don't let her in the room when I'm doing. All right. Uh, am I muted or not muted?
We can hear you.
All right, good. Um, well, you know, one of the things that I, I've been doing, uh, you know, to, to John's point, I've been trying to figure out, hey, how can I slow down the outgo so that I'm conserving as, as much as, as I can? But, uh, to, to Jim's point, um, one of the things that I have done is, I've been reaching out to some of my clients and those folks who may have been in the cycle of planning events and saying, you know, you may have switched to a virtual, uh, you know, virtual format. A lot of folks are doing that. Um, but I'm also trying to remind them that, uh, trying to enliven a virtual event is especially difficult, uh, just because of the, the, the nature of it, uh, that there's a remoteness. So it, what I'm trying to just plant the seed, it's even more critical that you have experienced presenters who know how, to present a message that is, uh, compelling. And not just a face in front of a screen, but they actually can bring some of their presentation skills. So I, I think it is important that we say, look, there, there's a value in the expertise of having presentation skills and having a real professional, speak, even if it's a virtual event. I'm real curious to see, Kay, how you do the, um, uh, virtual keynote. Because I do think that's one thing in our organization, we've got folks who've got expertise and, you know, they've got, uh, their trainers. And it's, I think for those kind of things, we can move it more naturally to an online or virtual, uh, package. Those of us who do, as Kay and I do, and John, uh, as an emcee, you know, um, we do more of the keynote and emotional experience. You know, I'm struggling a little more to figure out how to make that switch. And, you know, how can I get creative in doing that? So I'll be curious to talk with you, Kay, to figure out, uh, you know, what, what you're thinking for this upcoming thing. So, uh, yeah.
And we could help Dave if you want to purchase his book for $15.95, Happiness is a Funny Thing. He'd be, he'd be grateful for that.
And, and, and that's especially true because like Kay, I have let myself go. So I've got my box and I'm out of here.
Patrick Donadio has something to say. Patrick? You have to unmute yourself, my friend. There you go.
Yes, sir. Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Just, I wanted to put my picture up so you know how good I look. I don't, I don't want you to see me in my PJs. But, uh, just wanted to share a couple of quick things. You know, I think a lot of us make the assumption because, you know, we're all speakers, that most speakers are good at doing Zoom. And I just did a Zoom program yesterday for Ohio State, for the John Glenn School. A lot of you know, I've been doing this for probably 20 years with them. And we had a faculty call, and I can't tell you, but I'd say at least half of the group was very anxious about doing the Zoom workshop. So there are a lot of people who don't know how to do this well, who are not very good at it. And so I just want to encourage everybody that there's a lot of opportunities for people like us who do know how to do this. And I think, Dave, your point is very well taken, that you talk about, you know, um, you really need a professional. So, uh, and by the way, the Zoom is just amazing. We, 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 just real quick to give you some insights, if you're going to do some of this. We did an eight-hour workshop. We cut it down to four. And by using the Zoom breakout rooms, it was really fun. And we had people going to small groups of four, working on group exercises, come back to the main group. Of course, I had a moderator, which I think is always helpful. But there's a lot, I tell you what, they, they just sent me an email today. They want to know if I can do five more of these half-day workshops, because they were very pleased and there's a huge interest. And we had 40 people on this workshop yesterday. So I just want to, you know, give people some encouragement that there are companies out there that are very interested, and they're trying to find ways to keep their membership or their clients or their employees engaged. So that was my quick comment.
Thank you. Greg's got his hand up, his virtual hand up.
There we go. Uh, to, I, I think one thing that may help us all is, I, I've viewed everyone in this call as leaders. I mean, that's just the nature of our organization and I think the membership. And what I noticed even something really simple here in the neighborhood, I, you know, they, maybe they kind of saw me sitting on the porch in my wheelchair. But, you know, I've just been out, I run, I walk every day. And all of a sudden, I'm seeing people out there walking. My neighbor came by and he says, you embarrassed me. He said, you were in a wheelchair. And I looked at that and said, you know, I need to get off my butt and do something. But that aside, there's all, we all have expertise, and I think there's areas that we, we can lead in. And I think it's going to help a lot of people. There, I think people are looking for that at this point. And I'm, particularly people like Kay and, and, and Dave, man, I'll tell you what, we sure need your humor now. I guarantee you, people need that. So I think there's all, we have so much to offer. I think we just gotta, and ultimately, it's going to come back to us in one way, shape or form, sooner or later. But I think this is the time that we need to use our expertise, because there's a lot of people looking for leadership somewhere. And I think this is the group, this is the organization that provides that to them.
Okay. Thank you, Greg.
What Jack was talking about, you know, we think in terms of virtual meetings because of the quarantine, which we don't know how long that will last, two weeks, four weeks. It's not that. But in terms of what Jack was talking about with the economy, uh, that may affect live events for quite some time to come. Because, I mean, it could be a year, 18 months, who knows? And you know, once people are scared of something, it could be a long time before people even want to gather in groups. But not only that, but the expense of it. So I think that, uh, being able to present virtually and being able to that, to offer that, I mean, I, I don't, I don't even know what's going to happen with my fall jobs, if they're going to cancel or go virtual. And along with what Dave was saying, you can offer that as an alternative, even plant the seed. And I, I think, and Dave, you've given me a good idea on reaching out to former and current clients and just, just to post, to be helpful to them, to be thinking about, you know, what will you do? How will you gather your people? Because come on, let's face it, virtual is a lot cheaper than flying everybody to a location, getting the food, the hotel rooms and all that, and cheaper for, say, members of associations. So this could be a, I don't, I think we'll always have live meetings. But I think that we really need to be realistic about the fact that once people get the hang of this virtual thing, this may be a big wave, and it's good to be prepared for it.
I, I agree. And, and it's 12:59. If anybody wants to stay on longer, that, that's fine. We're getting towards the end for the hour. But I will leave you with one last thing. Uh, so when I get down, we all do, and, and I need, I need something to, to make me laugh. I, I need something to make me smile and sometimes cringe at. I've, I've got this, I want to share with you. I have it on my bookcase over here. And it's Dave Caperton on a stick. This went, went, and, and in all seriousness, this was taken flying back from Houston, I believe, or, or Dallas at the convention. And he looked at me like, you're sitting next to me, really? So I took this picture. I keep this in my office. I keep it on my bookshelf, because when, when I feel like crap at times, and, and I just look, I just start laughing. So, so Dave's there making me laugh all the time. So, what do you have in your office that you have, that you can look at when those times when you go, what the heck are we doing? John Petz just raised his hand. So there you go.
Hello, I'm mute. I did raise my hand. Here's one thing, if you want, uh, hopefully a laugh. Can I share my screen for one second? Am I set up to do that? Sometimes he shut me down. All right. Hey, I, I put this out there like three days ago, and I've got magicians all around the world and comedians who are jumping in to do this. It's become the most massive logistical project I've ever had in my life. But, uh, if anyone wants to join, by all means, please do so. It, uh, the, the fact was, you know, miracles and magic, many of you know what it is. It's to give kids in a life-threatening condition the chance to forget about the hospital beds and the shots and come just laugh and enjoy the wonderment and magic of what it is. But, uh, everyone needs that right now. So I'm, it, it literally couldn't be, I call it the world's largest magic show. I have no idea if it is. But, uh, if you just want to laugh, it's, it's going to be interesting. It is truly going to be interesting. It might suck. It might be, hope not, but we got some, a couple Vegas headliners, you know, Spain, Germany, Australia, Netherlands, magicians. I'm hosting on, uh, production studio software, and we're going to go around the world and, and do tricks. So if you want to join, have a, have a laugh, please come join.
Well, I'll be there.
Selfish plug, that's it.
No worry. I mean, that's great. And I went to the show this year in February for the first time, and quite frankly, was absolutely blown away. Blown away by the kids' faces, blown away by the, the, the magic and entertainment. And I still don't know, John, how you got in that box. They shoved stuff in there and you came out in one piece. You're, you're muted.
That's going to be the opener. So if you want to see it again, my, my daughter has to put me in the box and they've never done it, or she's never done it. So I, I hope that it works, but that's going to open the show.
Cool, cool. Well, thank everybody for attending. We'll do this again next week, same time, same bat channel. And, uh, everybody keep smiling, dialing. See ya.